We have an executive session from six to seven to discuss safety, security, personnel, and property.
Mr. Burkhart. Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Kraw.
Here.
Dr. Catatju. Dr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Reichert.
Here.
Mr. Hiran. Mr. Wagnets.
Here.
Mr. Klausert.
Here.
The board will take action to approve the minutes from the May ninth, May 23rd, and May 26th meeting. All those in favor? Minutes. Did I not say that?
Wait, you should, we should get a first and a second.
Yeah, motion.
I motion.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passed.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff, you want to go forward, please? Okay, enrollment hasn't changed from last month. We have kindergarten enrollment coming in. We have students leaving. There's a lot of fluctuation right now, but the biggest thing is an increase in the students who are identified as homeless. In the month of May, we were up to 15 students, but this will continue to change all summer and then at, you know, come August, things will calm down a little bit. At the high school, we have some pretty unique things going on. Our girls lacrosse team were district champions. They did a great job. They went on to state and had a good showing, but didn't get further, but we're real proud of them. As you can see, there's a lot of girls involved. It's a real well-defined program. The other is our FFA. We had four students go to FFA State to look or to do horse judging is what that particular event was, and they took first place in the state, so we're really proud of them as well. And then I just want to mention Cameron Commons. I don't have a picture of him, unfortunately, but he is a National Merit Scholar from Danville, which is quite prestigious, and he'll be going to the University of Central Florida. At the middle school, there's a lot going on. Spanish Club did a tie dye of infant items in Danville colors, of course, to donate to an orphanage in Guatemala. It's a clinic that was started by Dr. Erica McAlroy from Geisinger, and it provides both pre and postnatal care and delivery for women in Guatemala. The underwater robotics team had one of the best obstacle course times at a recent competition, and they, of course, persevered in the mission course, providing valuable insight into running the course more effectively. So they're working on their underwater robotics. Band members were performing for the DMS art night, as you can see there in the picture. Sixth grade students competed against other area schools during the 24 math competition, and they were semifinalists, and we had one sixth grade champion. So the three of them are in the picture there as well. Seventh grade students went to Lake Tobias, and then some of them were dissecting frogs, which I don't have that picture on there, but it was interesting. And eighth grade social studies students were, went around to the local cemeteries in Montour County to learn more about their local history. As you can see, there's lots of headlines there for Liberty Valley students. They've been very busy in the last month of school. You know, they've had math mall, they had their annual Iditarod run, they've done a poetry contest, just a variety of things. And my superintendent reports are always posted on the school board page, so you can go back in and see things. And when I have links to various things, you can go on and view those as well. And at the primary school, just all kinds of activities happening. You know, they're making various math projects. The library, the students were helping each other as librarians for the, for a short time there. We had students that were doing a variety of kicking through on the field day, the fun activities with the water, those kind of things. And then, of course, we did have elk at the building. So I like the sign, though, that they have up for the students. It says, "Always dream big." A Head Start kindergarten transition night. The kids were there with their families, and what they've done is they, Head Start's excited at hosting it again, a special night, because we had not been able to do it for a couple of years. So we're pleased to bring the kindergarten transition night back to the community and our youngest learners. Future Danville primary students engaged in activities, introducing them to aspects of kindergarten, such as going through the lunch line, riding a school bus. Families also had the opportunity to visit and explore kindergarten classrooms. And one more thing I think I should have here for the, yeah, the middle school. I just want to talk about the donations. We don't have to go back, Jeff. There was a $50 Think Big donation. Support staff at the nursing home collection was a $50 donation. The many hands helping other bed program, these kids gave $250 to that. There was a $50 donation to Autism Awareness Collection and $100 to Janet Wise Hospital as well. So, you know, these kids have worked hard to give donations from the faculty room, or I guess it's faculty room, the vocational school activity for soda and variety of other things. So, you know, the teachers work with some of the kids in the learning, or the special education classrooms to help them with those things. So that's, that's a nice piece as well. And a picture is worth a thousand words. I hope you enjoyed our pictures. Good, Jeff, thank you.
Floor is open for public comment. Agenda items, public comment for agenda items.
You doing the presentation?
No, I have, Mr. Verholic is doing the presentation.
Okay.
So, Mr. Verholic, would you come up? Mr. Johns is not here, so Mr. Verholic is going to take on. He is our assistant principal at the, he's our assistant principal at the high school.
Okay, so Mr. Johns couldn't be here this evening, so he asked me to give you the update to the, basically the summary and feedback from the athletics committee does the, or the athletics department does the surveys with the coaches and coaching staff of the sports teams. So this is just the summary from the entire school year. So if you could, Jeff. So if you look at the overall, there were 308 student athletes in the fall that participated in the surveys, and those include the junior high sports as well. So those were 308 participants in the fall, and you can see the sports. I won't read all those to you. In the winter, there were 212 student athletes, and in the spring, there were 372 student athletes, which is awesome. Gotcha. So in the fall, some of the 2021 highlights, the football team won their second consecutive District Four title and participated in the PIAA quad A tournament. The girls cross country won their District Four title at Bloonsburg University and then participated in the state meet at Hershey. The boys cross, cross country finished their third, finished third in District Four meet at Bloonsburg as well to qualify for the state meet in Hershey, and where we had multiple students medal, or one student medal, sorry. And then students won, the boys soccer team won the District Four title in obviously dramatic fashion for the first time since 2013 and participated in the AAA tournament at the state level. When it comes to winter, girls swimming won their third consecutive District Four title and participated in the PIAA state double A swim meet held at Bucknell University. We had multiple state medalists. The bowling team advanced several participants to the state tournament and qualified one athlete for the national competition. Wrestling had multiple participants advance through the sectional and district competition. One athlete qualified, finished two and two on the PIAA state tournament in Hershey. And then this year was new, which was the bocce ball, which was really cool to see the students kind of take their debut and hold some of the competitions here locally. And obviously, a lot of the, a couple of the meets were here at the school, so it was really cool to see. And then in the spring, we had baseball advance to District Four title game, which was really neat to see that. The boys track and field sent three athletes again to PIAA, well, the state, state meet in, which is in Shippensburg, sorry. As a former track ath, or coach, I don't know how, I forgot that, but I had one, we had one medalist there, four new school records during the season as well, which was really cool. Girls track and field sent four athletes to the PIAA state meet, which I believe was the four by one relay, is that right? Or the four by, four by eight relay, that's right, which is really neat. Girls lacrosse won their sixth district title in the last eight years and participated in the PIAA state tournament. So the background with the surveys, again, I'm not going to read all this to you, but generally speaking, over the course of the season, there's a pre and post-season meeting. During the meetings, there's goals and expectations and general feel for how the season would play out. It's going to be discussed. They talk to the, during the preseason meeting, coaches, meet with the trainers as well. There's constant and informal conversations and observations that go on throughout the season, and then there's discussion and feedback given to the coaches through all that process. And then one of the things they're trying to do is have students be able to volunteer anonymously their, their views on how the season went and that sort of thing. So these are the, the areas of focus. So section one is practice, planning, and teaching. Section two is the contest management. Section three is the character development and mentorship. And what we'll do, Jeff, you could, I'll show you a couple of the examples of how that would look. Again, these are just examples of how that area would play out. So this coach was patient and displayed self-control and poise, and then it would be rated on those, those areas for statements. The next section is contest management. Again, the coach developed effective game plans based on the scouting reports and then how they would rank with those. And then the third section, as we saw, character development and mentorship. And again, this coach was, used appropriate language, demonstrated respect towards all athletes, and then the students can read that. So these, again, we're not going to show the specific details, but if you look on, Jeff, you could do the next, these are just some of the open-ended responses. So what was the best thing about playing for this coach? So her enthusiasm for my, was my favorite part of having her as a coach. What was one thing you would like to see this coach change? And then obviously, the bottom would be, which some of the students, kind of interesting responses they gave, but to be harder on us. Next. So what message would most like, would you like most share, share with your coach about this season? And thanks for working hard with, working hard with us outside of practice when you didn't need to be there. Thank you for all the hard work you do for us, which I think is really kind of motivating and inspirational to the kind of effort and the dedication to our coaches and not only our head coaches, but our assistant coaches put and the trainer into working with our students, season in and season out, which is really cool. So not only are they working within the season, but a lot, most of the few, especially at the high school level, they're putting in tons of time outside of this, the regular season to prepare for the upcoming seasons. Gotcha. What is the most lasting memory you will take away from this past season? Coach telling us, telling me I am a ball of energy, celebrating on the bus, winning a District Four championship, you know, the encouragement that they share, which is really cool. Jeff? And if you played this sport for multiple seasons, which season would, would most memorable and was, why was this, or which season was most memorable and why? This season, because it has been the most normal season. Obviously, post-COVID, you know, this is probably one of the more normal seasons they've had more recently. This season has been most, we almost won the first round of states, which again, as you could see, some of the accomplishments our students, athletes have had is really kind of a testament to how hard they work and everything else. And then this one, because of my last, so, which is kind of tough to hear from different seniors and things like that that will be moving on, so. Jeff? I think that's it. Any questions? Again, it's just a nice recap to kind of see the reactions to some of the student athletes and that sort of thing.
Okay, the board will take action to approve consent agenda items, seven, one through twelve, four. A motion to approve.
Oh, I think. It was, it was added. It was, it was added because it was one of the ones that were added because of the last week.
Yeah, all, all of those are consent, listed under consent.
I'm sorry, seven, five, and I didn't.
I'm fine with it as consent.
Okay, so we're good with seven, five?
Oh, so seven, five is okay. So we went eight, one, and eleven, nine removed?
Eleven, nine.
She came back from the three thirty-nine.
Eleven, nine.
So.
All right, with eleven, nine, if you want to do it that way, I'm fine.
Okay, so eleven, nine's going to stay consent.
Highest states in the United States.
Nothing removed.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve item, agenda items seven, one through twelve, four with no exceptions?
My motion.
I motion.
Terry?
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
I believe so, yeah.
Can I get a motion to approve items 6-1 through 6-13 with their, those are all project payments?
Second.
Terry?
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Okay, can I get a motion to approve, to accept the bid from Donnie Bauer Incorporated in the amount of $717,091.65 for the construction contingency, with a construction contingency in the amount of $250,000, bringing the potential construction cost to $967,000 as presented for the.
Okay, what happened at the last meeting that we had? It was listed as K&amp;W Architects and not Donnie Bauer. So we needed to come back around and correct that. So that's what that is, is a correction. No, doesn't. Dave might know. Dave, do you know when the project actually starts?
More importantly, is it scheduled to be finished for the kids?
Yes, it's scheduled to be done mid-August. And we're not opening until September for the kids.
A motion.
My second.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
The board will take action to approve the purchase of certain real estate designated as tax parcel E6-36-53, containing 20.055 acres for the sum of $515,000 less any payments that have been made. And the payments that have been made were $34,333 for the year of 2018. $34,000, right? That's what I said, didn't I? I'm sorry, $34,333 for the year 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021, with $377,668 remaining as of 6/20/2022. Thank you. Motion to approve. Ms. Terry?
Dr. Green.
In the spirit of respecting previously, previous board decisions, yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart. Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Okay, the board will take action to accept the resignation of Angela Sevilo as co-advisor for FBLA for the.
They're a consent.
That was consent.
Oh, I am, and I am a consent, I apologize. It was the right color, Terry, I just ignored it.
I was trying to be pretty careful.
Thank you. Okay, the board will take action to approve the coaching list for the 2022 fall season as presented. The stipend, if applicable, will be paid at the end of the season consistent with the 2022-2023 budget. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve Megan Geis as SPM Club Advisor with a yearly stipend of $450 effective 2022-2023 school year?
I motion.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart. Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the following class advisors beginning 2022-2023 school year? Class of 2025 advisor, current ninth grade class, Lori Schwartz. Class of 2026 co-advisors, current eighth grade class, Miranda Vining and Lauren Parker. Motion to approve?
Motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I go, get a motion to approve the quote in the amount of $63,691.95 from TSI for grades three through five social studies curriculum materials as presented?
Motion.
A second.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
A motion to approve the quote in the amount of $89,846.76 from McGraw-Hill for grades three through five science curriculum materials as presented?
Second.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm 10-5. Can motion to approve the bills for payment for May 4, 2022 through June 6, 2022 as presented?
Second.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt. Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
11-10. Can I get a motion to approve the hiring of Brian Myers, a summer technology intern at an hourly rate of $9 an hour? He'll be working 32 hours a week from June 14, 2022, through August 19, 2022, on the receipt of all necessary paperwork and clearances? Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve adding a data services assistant position to Danville Head Start as presented?
It comes out of the Head Start budget. Yeah, it's, it's in, it's in there. It's not new. Well, it is new, but it's not. Okay, ready? Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
And the next one is to add the position, because we don't have that position. And then I had to do a new job description because it was a part-time job prior to that. Okay, that's what that one is.
Okay, the board will take action to approve adding a full-time athletic director position as presented? Motion to approve?
I motion to table, 11-12? Just adding.
Just adding the full-time position, it's not the person.
My motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Okay, the interpreter position is not budgeted because we recently had a student tour Liberty Valley. She currently goes to Scranton School for the Deaf. That's what's budgeted, is her position there. But she's going to be coming back to the building, so we need an interpreter for her. And that's part of an IEP process. And it is, the interpreter position is already in the support staff, but very old job description and stuff. That's why we're putting it out, because it hasn't been something we've used for several years.
Okay, can I get a motion to add an American Sign Language interpreter position to the district?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Let me explain the next one, if you don't mind. The, the classroom monitor position is something that Act 91 has come in with to try and help alleviate the difficulty to get substitutes. It's a position, and you'll see in the job description, there's several requirements that the person has to meet to even be qualified. But it allows a para to go day-to-day in a, as a substitute teacher in a classroom. But another teacher has to provide the lesson plans. Well, when you have a teacher absent, they're supposed to provide their lesson plans anyway. It's something that I had to write letters to PSEA for approval. And they have given us approval for both Act 91 for classroom monitor and for substitute teachers who are retired, retirees from the system. So we have those to try and help alleviate the substitute situation.
Okay. Motion to add a classroom monitor position to the district?
Second.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the MOU between Danville Area School District and Danville Area Educational Support Personnel Association beginning June 6, 2022 through Jan, August, excuse me, August 29, 2022 as presented?
I saw motion. Second.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the Human Resource District Accountant Coordinator contract between Danville Area School District and Jonathan Adams beginning July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2025 as presented? Or we modify it? Yes.
No, it's a year-to-year contract.
Right, but it's already.
It should, it should have ought to have been, yes, it should have been renewed. Definitely, yes.
Right.
Exactly. It dies if there's no motion.
I'll make a motion to table it.
I second.
Already committed for this coming year.
Okay. So the motion's on the table to table.
And Mr. Wagnets seconded, right?
Yep.
All right, how about now? Okay, sorry.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the police officer contract between the Danville Area School District and Lerue Bryan for the 2022-2023 school year as presented? Motion to approve?
Mr. Wagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green. Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the police officer contract between the Danville Area School District and Matthew Hunter for the 2022-2023 school year as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Motion to approve the Act ninety-three Administration Compensation Plan, beginning July first, 2022, through June thirtieth, 2024, as presented?
A motion to approve.
Second. Can we? Act ninety-three, I was away for a while, I was under the impression we're ready to move, is that true? I thought so, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Motion to approve pay raises for Act ninety-three employees effective July first, 2022, as presented?
I'd be willing to make a motion if it were broken out. It's not, it's pay raises and the stipends, and I think those should be two separate things, but if somebody else is ready to move on it, that's fine.
I believe the stipends were incorporated in the budget originally. That's there for information only, so.
So we would strictly be voting on the pay raises, then?
Correct, because that is already budgeted as far as the stipends.
So the stipends are already-
Already taken care of in the budget.
But they were never voted on. So you ran that through the budget. I guess that's my problem. I'll let everybody else go where you need to go with that.
It says pay raises, it doesn't say stipends.
But we never vote-
Does talk about the raises, but yeah.
But we didn't vote on the stipends, correct? You're saying that the stipends were put into the budget, but not voted on separately? Okay.
This would be for the actual raise, percentage raises only.
Okay.
The intention is.
I'll let you go where you need to go with this, Mike.
I can't do nothing without a motion?
That's what I'm saying.
Is it something that we can table and talk about?
Well, if there's no motion, it's tabled.
I'll make a motion to table. I'll second it.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can the board take action to approve pay raises for the following non-bargaining unit employees effective July first, 2022, as presented? Dana Ernest, Administrative Assistant for Special Education; Terry Faust, Administrative Assistant to Superintendent; Beth Norman, Administrative Assistant to the Business Manager; Patricia Merrill, Administrative Assistant to the Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Technology; Donna Robbins, Accounting Assistant; Christine Freeman, Administrative Assistant, Child Accounting and Receptionist. Oh, there we go, continued on page two. Pam Burrows, Administrative Services Coordinator; Nicholas Truax, Data Services Specialist; Richard Wilson, Assistant Director of Information Technology.
I motion.
Second.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I get a motion to approve the employment of Ashley Hackenberg as Director of Family and Health Services at Head Start at a starting annual salary of forty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, effective July eleventh, 2022?
Second.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I motion to approve the employment of Devon Frank? Devon Frank, is it Frank or Frankie?
Frank.
Okay. Devon Frank as Social Studies Teacher at Danville High School at the contracted yearly salary of fifty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars, effective August thirtieth, 2022.
I motion.
Second.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Motion to approve the employment of Brian Albertson as Athletic Director of the Danville High School at a yearly starting salary of forty-five thousand dollars, effective July first, 2022.
I motion to table this hire for the reasons I stated during executive session.
Can you second?
Second.
Mr. Brookhart.
Can I make a quick, are we gonna? First of all, I hope it's relayed. I personally feel Brian Albertson is very, very qualified for this position. I understand the concerns, and we're the small board, so I'm gonna vote yes on the table, but I think he is a good candidate.
But you vote yes?
Yes.
To the table? Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
I just want to echo the sentiments just expressed. This has nothing to do with the candidate personally.
Not at all.
So I vote yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
No.
Mr. Vagnets.
I just want to say it's about the process, and I vote yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the agreement between Danville Area School District and Next Century Inc. to provide an interim Director of Curriculum, Instruction and Technology during the period, July first, 2022, through June thirtieth, 2023, as presented?
Can I ask a question about it? The agreement itself, is it terminatable month to month? Because I couldn't fully gather from the actual document that provided whether it's an agreement for the full year, or whether it's, we can terminate it three months in, two months in?
Yeah, I believe it would be. It is, I'll pull it out, it is with the IU for it, and then if we decide we no longer need it, we would just need to notify them and go through the process.
So at any time, we can terminate the agreement? It agrees for a year, but if we only need someone for three months?
Right. It says in there that the district has the unrestricted right to terminate the agreement in event that funds are not appropriate, or withdrawn, or otherwise become available. So it specifically includes that in the agreement.
So I couldn't tell whether those clauses that followed were the only clauses under which termination could occur, or whether there were other clauses beyond and above that? So, thank you, that's the only question I wanted to ask about it. No, I think this is a great option, but you just have to determine how long you want to be involved in it, but I do think, and I think Dr. Boyle put this out as one of the options, and I think that was the consensus, and it makes a lot of sense, but you ask a great question. There.
Okay, with that answered, motion to approve?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure if we found someone, that we're not obliged to continue paying for redundancy. Right.
Second?
Second.
Wow, that was good.
Who motioned?
I don't know.
Your own, or your own-
Okay. And then somebody motioned third, second.
Wayne or Sandy picked one, it was the same time.
I did.
They were in unison.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert. Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I motion to approve the service provider agreement between Kid Ventures Therapy Inc. and Danville Area School District to provide physical therapy and occupational therapy services, beginning September sixth, 2022, for a period of one year, as presented?
They are services that are attached to 504 and IEPs, so they're, you know, services that we message you.
I motion.
Second.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Can I motion to approve the agreements for the 2022-2023 school term for Children's Services Center Partial Hospitalization Program and Therapeutic Educational Program as presented?
Motion.
Second.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Motion to approve the interscholastic sports coverage through Yoda Insurance, Access Insurance Company, at a cost of ten thousand, nine dollars, as presented?
This did not reflect any changes from last year's cost, so it's flat.
I motion.
Second.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
On this, on twelve point eight, there is an increase to the district insurance of five thousand, seventy dollars for the insurance, but then there's a decrease of six thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight, or six hundred and sixty-eight dollars on the workman's comp. So we then have a net decrease of approximately a thousand dollars, a little more than a thousand.
Is this the yearly premium, or the six-month?
Twenty twenty-three. Yearly. We did that last year, and this did come in much better.
I motion. I'll second it.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent to approve Matthew Killian as a bus driver for Fishing Creek, effective June 2022 through August 23?
Yes, motion.
Second.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yep.
Mr. Reichardt.
Staying.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Motion to approve the updated contract for transportation for the twenty-one, twenty-two through twenty-five, twenty-six school years between M.A.E. Gordner and the Danville Area School District as presented?
This has to do with a family movement of the ownership of the business, and the previous owner, I believe, passed, so.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Do I need to abstain from this, too? No? Okay, I'm fine, then. Yes.
Mr. Vagnets.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
All right, the transportation, the school schedule, previously, we had discussed the fact that we were looking at bus runs and the fact that we may be low on drivers. School times weren't announced. This is to officially announce that the school times will match what they have matched this year, with the primary building opening at three, or eight twenty-five, and the bus pickup will start approximately three-ten. Liberty Valley has the same timeframe. The middle school has eight oh-five to two fifty, and the high school has eight o'clock to two forty-five. So those will be the official times for the start and end of the days for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Motion.
No, there needs to note that.
Okay, information.
Board concerns and any items for next meeting agenda?
So I just want to give the update on the swimming lessons. So I just want to give the update on the collaboration between the DAC and the school district for free swimming lessons for the second graders. It is now fully funded for the ten thousand dollars that was needed in order to pay for it. I just wanted to publicly thank the two institutions which donated to fully fund this. One was Evangelical Hospital, I'd like to say thank you to them for donating half the money for the children's swim lessons, and I would like to thank UPMC for the other half of the money, which was donated to fund the children's swim lessons.
So they're donating five thousand dollars each?
It was twenty-five hundred for each of them.
Yeah, exactly.
And then there was an anonymous donor-
Right.
Who donated five thousand dollars that the DAC came to the table with. So I would like to thank everyone for making it possible for the second graders to have free swimming lessons, and those two health institutions specifically for being willing to donate the money.
Thank you for working on that, Dr. Green.
No problem. Mr. Klausert. I know this had been answered before, but just for the public tax collection, with Ms. Ely leaving for another position, are we on schedule, everything's okay?
We're on schedule. We do have another individual in the office that has been taking all the courses and did what was necessary, and then the attorney is working with Mrs. Ely and the other tax collectors to make sure everything is the way we need it to be.
Okay.
All right, but we do need a business manager to then step up.
Definitely. And movement to the primary, that is not happening for the administration?
That's not happening, no. With all the changes in the administrators of movement, I would suggest we hold that for a year, and then hopefully we get it, everything set up, so Head Start can be up here, or Head Start can be at the high school with two classrooms. with two classrooms for the childcare programs. And then the movement for the administrative office would, that would just be more timely.
Was there work being done over there to prepare for that?
Nothing's been done.
Nothing's been done, okay.
Right.
All right. And there's no contract signed or anything like that?
No, we didn't do anything like that. We just started a process of discussion and exploration.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Okay.
Do that now. You can do it at the end.
Yeah, I want to come back.
Break now.
I'd like to break for a quick executive session from campus. Personnel.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, from eight oh six to eight twenty-four, we held an executive session to discuss personnel. Can I get a motion to bring back eleven point two onto the agenda?
I, I saw motion.
Second.
Two zero, yeah. Eleven point two zero, I'm sorry. Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. No, I think it was Richard and.
It was me.
Yeah.
Oh ma'am, I gotta do public discussion.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Don't you do it for this?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
I apologize. Go ahead.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognatz.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Right. Okay, okay. Okay, I would like to get a motion to approve pay raises for Act Ninety-three employees effective July first, two thousand and twenty-two as presented.
I saw motion.
Second.
So that's the original motion.
Correct.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognatz.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Motion regarding the stipends.
I need a motion to amend the agenda to approve the stipends for Act Ninety-three. Prove the stipends.
I motion.
I'll second.
And then because this is a motion from the floor, then after board discussion, public comment, because again, Sunshine Act requires us to amend the agenda and then vote, and then we'll have an underlying vote on the motion if majority approves.
Okay, so I have my second. It's open for public comment. Public comment on that agenda item? This is to amend the.
To amend the agenda to, to approve stipends for the Act Ninety-three employees.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognatz.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yep.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes.
Now you need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Correct.
Again, now I need a motion to approve the stipends for the Act Ninety-three.
Motion.
Second.
Any. Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah. Public comment? Any board discussion? Hearing.
Mr. Vognatz.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I get a motion to amend the agenda to accept the resignation of Dr. Boyle as superintendent effective July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and to authorize the advertisement of applications for superintendent?
I saw motion.
Second.
That one's gonna take me a second here.
Is there any public comment? Whenever you're ready, Mr. Harry.
Okay, I apologize. That was a, that wasn't added on to anything. I had a.
And hold on, there's an additional portion with respect to the, the deadline.
I'm sorry, and would you please remind me who first and second it.
Well, that goes with this too.
I firsted.
I second.
And, and with that on the agenda, it's, with the screening of applications will start on July twentieth, and we'll be accepting applications until the position is filled.
Okay. If, I'll take the vote and then I'll add that in, okay? Mr. Vognatz.
Yes.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Can I get a, a motion to accept the resignation of Dr. Boyle as superintendent effective July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and authorize the advertisement of applications for superintendent, with the screening of the applicants beginning on July twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, while accepting applications until the position is filled?
Motion to approve.
I second.
Any public comment? Mr. Harry.
Mr. Brookhart.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Kroll.
Yes.
Dr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Reichardt.
Yes.
Mr. Vognatz.
Yes.
Mr. Klausert.
Yes. Any other board concerns or items for the next meeting agenda?
When is the next meeting, Mr. Klausert? Are we doing a.
I would think July eleventh.
Okay, because I didn't know if that was scheduled or not. Initially, it wasn't.
And we need to start working on the schedule for the second meetings.
Good.
Every month?
Yes.
The twentieth may be a good day.
Well, I think if we're gonna screen applications, we're gonna have to meet, right? Yeah.
Oftentimes, when they're doing a work session and a regular session, they do the work session the week prior to the regular session. So at this point, we have it the second Monday is the board meeting, possibly the first Monday could be the work session.
Yeah.
It'd be up to you guys.
Yeah, the two consecutive makes sense. And the other thing, Mr. Klausert and everyone else here, we did not move on an athletic director position. So that means as of July first, that is a vacant position. So we're gonna have to get a plan in place to get that filled. I know the building principals by PAAA Constitution oversee athletics, but that's a burden to put on them as well at this point. So we need to know what, we need to get a plan of how we're gonna fill that position. Because right now, we don't have one that I hear. I just wanted to throw that out there. It's tabled, but then what?
Well, yeah, we, yeah, and we need to address that as soon as possible.
Like, I know we're all anxious to move on here, but it's not really fair to, the kids that are athletes and the people that are assuming those positions, not to at least have a plan in place to get the position filled.
Any suggestions?
Not, not right offhand, other than.
Another meeting this month, maybe?
I don't see any other way. Gonna have to. At this point, we're just left with the table, unless I missed something. Maybe we get all nine people here, it'll.
So it would be after the twenty-fifth when Mr. Hiron.
Yeah.
Returns.
How about next Monday?
I don't, what's the date?
Twenty-seventh?
Twenty-seventh?
Yes, you're the president, and I just think you gotta do something with it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that. Does anybody have any objections with the twenty-seventh?
We're gonna discuss and get a process. Is that the plan on the twenty-seventh, or what?
I mean, like I stated previously, my objection was to the process.
Yeah.
It has nothing to do with the individual.
Yeah, mine wasn't anything to do with the individual either, but didn't feel it was moving, so.
So what is the meeting to entail, and when will the hiring actually take effect?
What are the thoughts?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Schedule a meeting for the twenty-seventh. And then, then it's. I could say we don't go nowhere until it's done.
Because if we're only going to discuss it, you're gonna need a meeting then to hire somebody, too.
Any other comments from the board? I don't know if I did public comment or not yet. Any other public comment? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See you Monday.